Fine.
We are now recording.
Thank you. As Chair of the One Kind of School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to the Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is something going on.
Are you getting feedback?
Yes. Please note that there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are, A, providing a public access to this meeting by telephone with additional possibilities, video, and other electronic means. We're using Zoom for this electronic meeting. And there is a phone number, and that is 646-876-9923. Webinar ID is 98022163242, or by clicking the following website. It's listed on the agenda. Secondly, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting can be done through SAU21office, www.sau21.org. Thirdly, providing a mechanism for public to alert the public body during the meeting if there is a problem. And that number is 603-926-8992, extension 103. Or email revans@SAU21.org. And fourthly, adjourned in the meeting if public is unable to access this meeting. In the event of the public is unable to access this meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. All of the votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. And with each man and state's presence, please state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. And at this time, we will take the roll call.
Just make sure to unmute yourselves when I call your name. Heidi Tarasina?
Here with family, potentially in and out.
Henry Marsh?
Here, hopefully no one will be walking through.
Leslie LaFond?
Here alone.
Mike Rabideau?
Here with a dog.
And Tony Delano. I see Tony is here, but I'm... Tony, I'm gonna... Tony, are you with us? I'm not sure. I see Tony's here, but I don't hear Tony. I don't know if he's having an issue with audio. So I'm not going to mark him as present at the moment. So I have the roll... Oh, wait a second, we gotta chat.
He can hear us, but his browser is preventing him from audio.
Okay, so he is with us, so I am going to mark him that he's here. Tony, if you call in, just let me know, and then I'll bring your phone over. Okay, we did get a response from him. All right, I have the roll call.
Okay. The... Before we continue, the superintendent would like to make a statement, I believe.
You're muted.
Thank you very much. The return to school plan was presented. What we ran into in meetings last night were a number of comments, questions, related to that presentation. So the presentation is itself, the slides are posted on our website at www.sau21.org. And actually, the full presentation to the Joint Board, that is our narration and discussion of those slides, is also posted there. And that gives, I think, a really good overview of some issues. Some issues that we discussed in meetings so far that I just thought I would start a brief discussion with is that there was a lot of misunderstanding of the crisis remote learning versus what's been proposed here in our enriched model. And I think there are just a few really key characteristics that should really be highlighted in that enriched model. First is that we see the majority of the time teachers teaching in that model from the school building. There may be exceptions because of accommodations and those kinds of things within a particular teacher's day, but the teachers will be doing that. We talked about that in the spring with our boards in terms of making sure that our buildings were actually capable of doing that, and they are, thanks to Jason Saltmarsh and other members of the technology team. Second of all, we wanted to have the opportunity for small groups of kids to come in from time to time in particular courses, whether it was for a work they might do with an individual teacher or whether it was for a particular small group project. So we see this very much as an open, with air quotes, "school building", with students able to come in to interact with teachers. And I think third, and maybe an issue we didn't do as well with the other night, was we see that increasing over time. So there's hopefully a progression here as we continue to monitor community data, as we continue to monitor our data with respect to our staff and their availability because of various accommodations required. All those factors, and we hope that we're able to increase that over time. We've made a commitment, in terms of the other board discussions, to really reexamine that every two weeks in terms of looking at whether we can increase the numbers of those interactions of those face-to-face, small-group kinds of environments for students. Not the least of which for parents. And there's a great slide, thanks to David Hobbs, Jason Saltmarsh, in there about lessons learned from crisis learning. Among those is the need for a schedule. And those schedules, Dr. Hobbs has put some sample schedules of what that schedule might look like, which means that students have a set schedule, an opportunity each day to interact in a live manner with their teachers, much as they would in person. And so those are sort of the basics of the enhancements that we believe make this a very different experience than what we all encountered in the spring. And so we're happy to discuss any part of sort of the recommendation. But I believe that Mr. Marsh wanted to discuss some aspects of that that would require us to be in non-public. So I think that's part of the plan, and we're prepared to have that conversation as well. Thank you. You're muted, Henry. Now I get to say it.
We ready to go into a non-public? Is that the next on the agenda? Okay. I would need a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91-A:3, and that would be under C.
I make a motion to enter non-public session under RSA 91-A:32C.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call vote on that.
Okay, Heidi?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Tony? I think Tony is responding his yes. I have a yes from him.
So Rhonda or Dr. Hobbs, do you want to describe for people who are attending what we're going to do and how they can stay here and those kinds of important factors?
Yeah, so the best way to do this, rather than putting 145 people on hold one by one, is I've just sent the school board an invitation to a different Zoom meeting. So you have that in your inboxes. So what's going to happen is the board will log off this meeting, log onto a different Zoom meeting. Rhonda would keep this meeting up, so the attendees can still stay here. And then when we come back from non-public, we'll all just show up again. Does that make sense? Okay, so it's in your email, and we'll hop over to the new meeting. I'll start it up right now.
Thank you.
So you guys will actually leave this meeting?
I think I did, did I not?
No, you're still in the public one.
Okay, so I need to...
I'm still in the public one, I'm looking here.
Right.
Do I leave? I leave it completely?
Right, you leave it. And once you leave, then you click on "Join the Meeting" in the invite that Dave sent you. And when you're done with the non-public, you'll leave that. And then you can just click right back on here, and you'll come right back into this one, because we're not going to end this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. How you doing, Henry?
All set?
I think so. You just have to leave this meeting.
All right.
And there should be a little... Like when you move your mouse, there should be a little red button at the bottom, somewhere that says "Leave".
I got it.
Okay, when you click that, make sure then you open up the invite that David sent you. Okay, everybody, we'll be back.
In this forum, so you are in the right place and I apologize for my little error a few moments ago. So just stay tuned. Thank you.
The board will be resuming this meeting. They'll be coming in momentarily.
Slowly but surely, we're getting everybody back. Heidi is back and Henry is back. And then we're looking for Mike. And Mike is back. Ron as well. Everybody here? Am I missing anybody? I don't think so.
My only question is whether Tony needs a phone to be able to speak.
Let me find that. You know, he was able to pop in the other. Tony, can you hear us? I don't know why we can't hear him on this side, but we could hear him earlier.
He dialed in.
Okay.
So he needs a phone number.
I'm not seeing his phone number.
No, no, he needs the phone number to call in from his phone.
For this meeting?
Yeah.
It's posted.
Yeah, but can you send it to him?
Yeah. Let me go into my email and get that. So don't do anything yet. Okay, so I just emailed that to him. Oh, Tony says he can hear us and he can see us. Okay, so Henry, I have that the board resumed public meeting. And you just need to unmute yourself.
Okay, we are resuming our school board meeting and I'm going to request that Dr. Lupini make a statement.
Sure, thank you. So we have recommended, so we're in the midst of a meeting with each of our boards over, starting with the joint board on Wednesday night, Southampton and Northampton last night and our other three boards this morning and at noon today. And we were asked to, we prepared a presentation. That presentation went to the joint board. It's available for those who have joined us since the beginning of the meeting. That presentation is available on our website at www.sau21.org. And the presentation to the joint board, which we're not going to repeat here this morning, is available there. And it takes you through the various recommendations that were made individually to each of our boards. And what I said at that time was that parent survey data was exceptionally important to us in looking at the different options available to us. But it was not alone in its importance to us. There are a number of different factors that we try to delineate that in making these recommendations to the board, including our employee data on where they were in terms of return to school and their own needs for accommodations and modifications, as well as, you know, the date in the particular area. And over the last couple of weeks, we've been very, very fortunate to be working with two area physicians, both who reside in our districts, who have been advising them. And I should say to the board that Dr. Michael Queedy, who is one of those people, he's with us actually here. I saw him in the attendees. He was with us at both meetings last night. We really appreciate him being available if you have any specific questions of him in terms of this work that we've laid out. So the recommendation here is the enhanced virtual learning model for the high school to start the year. And I want to emphasize that point. It is to start the year. We've said that we will reevaluate. We're looking at every two weeks against a set of metrics that we will publish in terms of how, and everything that we're putting in place is designed to move us more toward an
The board will be resuming this meeting, they'll be coming in momentarily. Slowly but surely, we're getting everybody back. Heidi is back. And Henry is back. And then we're looking for Mike. And Mike is back.
Ron, as well?
Everybody here? Am I missing anybody? I don't think so.
My only question is whether Tony needs a phone to be able to speak.
Let me find that. You know, he was able to pop in the other. Tony, can you hear us? I don't know why we can't hear him on this side, but we could hear him earlier.
He dialed in.
Okay.
So he needs a phone number.
I'm not seeing his phone number.
No, no, he needs the phone number to call into from his phone.
For this meeting?
Yeah.
It's posted.
Yeah, but can you send it to him?
Yeah. Let me go into my email and get that. So don't do anything yet. Okay, so I just emailed that to him. Oh, Tony says he can hear us and he can see us. Okay, so Henry, I have that the board resumed public meeting. You just need to unmute yourself.
Okay. Hey, we are resuming our school board meeting and I'm going to request that Dr. Lupini make a statement.
Sure, thank you. So we have recommend, so we're in the midst of a meeting with each of our boards over, starting with the joint board on Wednesday night, Southampton and Northampton last night and our other three boards this morning and at noon today. And we were asked to, we prepared, we prepared a presentation, that presentation went to the joint board, it's available for those who have joined us since the beginning of the meeting. That presentation is available on our website at www.sau21.org. And the presentation to the, to the joint board, which we're not going to repeat here this morning, is available there. And, and it takes you through the various recommendations that were made individually to, to each of our boards. And what I said at that time was that parent survey data was exceptionally important to us in looking at the different options available to us. But it was not alone in its importance to us. There are a number of different factors that we try to delineate that in making these recommendations to the board, including our employee data on where they were in terms of return to school and their own needs for accommodations and modifications, as well as, you know, the date in the particular area. And, and over the last couple of weeks, we've been very, very fortunate to be working with two area physicians, both who reside in our districts, who have been advising them, and I should say to the board that Dr. Michael Queedy, who is one of those people, he's, he's with us actually here, I saw him in the attendees, he was with us at both meetings last night, we really appreciate him being available if you have any specific questions of him in terms of this work that we've, that we've laid out. So the recommendation here is the enhanced virtual learning model for the high school. To start the year, and I want to emphasize that point, it is to start the year, we've said that we will reevaluate. We're looking at every two weeks against a set of metrics that we will publish in terms of how, and everything that we're putting in place is designed to move us more toward an in-person experience. The goal laid out by our joint board was to have students in school five days a week, full day, you know, over the course of the year as soon as possible, and that is still our goal. We've, we've enhanced that model that people experienced in the spring in a number of ways, including a daily schedule for, for live experiences using the various platforms. Opportunities for small groups of kids to come into school to meet with teachers, whether it's for additional support or whether it's, it's for a particular project, an art class, something like that. And we've also built into that orientation at the beginning of the year because we heard a pretty big concern with kids starting out in a remote experience with having met teachers, those kinds of things. And, and so we're committed to making sure the beginnings of the year are devoted to opportunities for small groups of kids to, to meet and work with their teachers. So all of those pieces are, and again, they're, they're laid out in much more detail in that presentation that you can view and, and those slides that are available there. And so that, that's, that's where we are. I want, I want to say, because we continue to be asked about it more at the high school than in other places, that there's a slide in there that actually speaks to athletics, athletics right now are up in the air, the NHIAA has pushed back the start date for athletics. And has taken, not taken a position on whether athletics will actually occur in the fall. There are, we're, we're in constant contact with our, in particular, our southeast part of the state partners, districts, as to those discussions. There are some of those districts that are going to be recommending in the next few weeks that certain sports, if not all fall sports, not, not run. And we're, we're sort of participating in those conversations and monitoring them, we've not taken a position in terms of a recommendation to you yet on that. There are other people who are looking at sports in a more differentiated fashion between high-contact, low-contact sports and making decisions that they won't recommend running high-contact sports, but they would allow low-contact sports, cross-country golf, those kinds of things to run. There's actually a proposal that was put forward by our athletic director, I want to give him a lot of kudos for really being thoughtful about this issue and, and sort of recommending to fellow ADs and, and the NHIAA that they take a look at moving sports around, moving some low-contact sports to the, to the fall, like baseball, softball, and the ones I mentioned before and running those in the fall and then moving something like football to the spring. We think that's a very thoughtful approach, but it's not one that the NHIAA has been responsive to yet. So no position on, on that today, that will be something for us to discuss, I think, at your regular meeting on the 18th. So, Dr. Akilian, Dr. Hobbs, do you want to add anything out of the presentation or a particular to Winnicott? And Mr. McGowan, I don't want to put you on the spot because I know we said, you know, in terms of getting into the detail, that would start on the 18th, but, but, but if you have anything you want to add in terms of the specifics of the model, Winnicott, as you started to think about it, all of that would be helpful. So I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Sure, I mean, the great job kind of giving the overview of where we are and what the tenants of the plan are. In subsequent conversations in the last few days with Mr. McGowan, we have been looking at the, the high school schedule for virtual learning, and one of the conversations we're having is how to tailor it in a way that allows us, to your point, Dr. Lupini, to seamlessly transition back into school. So as our cohorts can get larger and larger, as the time spent within school can get longer and longer for our students, where, you know, the idea is to get, get to a tipping point where we're able to actually get the student body back in the school with relatively a seamless transition. So that's the goal, and that's kind of the mindset we're approaching scheduling with at the, at the moment.
And I can add, we would echo that with special education, so working closely with Mr. Pillsbury to create different ways for students to come in, small groups, to receive those high priority services. That's something that is incredibly important and we have more time to plan and we know how to keep kids safe while, while doing that. But, you know, aside from students who are identified, we want to implement different ways for kids to connect. Connection is what, what we were missing before, and the social emotional aspect for, for adolescents, I'd argue, in particular, is incredibly important. So going to an all-virtual model will require that we have those orientations. We will want to assess our students to find out where we're missing, you know, if there are gaps as far as what tiers we can provide kids for supports, live contact daily in academics, but also the services, check-ins with our school counselors. We want to support any other creative ways that the high school can, can bring kids together virtually and sometimes in small groups. So that can go beyond academics, that can be clubs, that can be activities, potentially some non-contact sports, as Dr. Lupini mentioned. Also, just providing opportunities for students, and I know we're talking about students, but this is also true, incredibly true for staff. We want to help to create some organic ways for connections inside and outside of the professional setting.
I can just talk about the schedule a little bit. As we, you saw on Wednesday's night presentation, we're finalizing that, it'll be three periods a day, that'll be a little bit longer. We will still maintain Warrior Block to maintain that connection with students. And then we'll also include some time in there for office hours and also possible in-person instruction. The schedule is designed that, you know, as we transition hopefully to a full return to school, we can use it as a transitioning that will help us get to a full schedule. And we're also looking into what's the best way to transition students back into the school to possibly meet with the teachers, to receive equipment, to receive books. We're discussing what we can do specifically with the freshmen, whether or not we do something before the actual start of school or integrate that when we come back on September 8th. So we will be working on that over the weekend and the next few days. And I'll be sending updates to all the parents and the students as far as what that plan will look like. But again, it's a promising plan and our goal, and I think all the teachers are to get everybody back into the building as soon as possible, but we will work with the superintendent in the SAU to make sure that we have those benchmarks in place to ensure that it's safe for everybody.
So we're happy to try to answer any questions from the board members.
Henry, may I speak?
Certainly.
Um, I think one of the things that maybe is oversimplified, but to state that what we're introducing here isn't what we've gone through in the spring. I mean, we were just basically shot out of a cannon, leave the school, that's it. And that was the best planning we could do at the moment. But now we've had this chance to develop a comprehensive plan for bringing the kids closer to the school environment than it was before. I think that's important to say.
I have a few thoughts that I'm happy to share, unless, Mike, you had more to, you wanted to say? No, okay. So having a student just graduate from Winnicott going through a pandemic, you know, very close to my heart and understanding the pinnacle things in their lives, like graduation, I know we have proms, things that kids have, have missed. It's, it's not small, okay, these are huge events in our lives. And education is a huge event. It's not an event, a huge education, it's critical. And as I think about the best way to move forward, and I think about the best way to have a consistent education for our students, as much as I want them to be in school, we all want them to be in school, we all want it to be like it was. I can't imagine throwing our students into a situation, which I keep calling like a yo-yo effect. The kids go to school, they come home, the teachers go to school, they come home. Everyone, you know, if you look at what the nurses have to follow the regulations and how they have to send students home for, for muscle aches, for a cough, for things that we would see normally in a regular school day and disregard that. Now students will look at someone who's coughing and think, holy cow, I'm going to get COVID. The anxiety that's going to be created from that, the paranoia that will be created from that. I can't imagine our students having a consistent, consistent education being in that type of environment. And so for me, looking forward, even though I know it's temporary, having that consistency, even if it's virtual, I think is going to be the best education for them. And that's where I'm coming from, and I know mental health is critical, and I think there's going to be issues regardless if we're in person or remote. And so I think that's critical, and I think the fact that the school is willing to have these orientations to bring our community together, to feel part of the Winnicott community is really important. And I know we'll be viewing these every, I believe it's two weeks, to see where we're at. You know, it is, is really important. And again, I think of the students' education, and that's what we're here for, and their safety. And I think the consistency in learning will be there if we do it virtually.
I agree with you, Heidi, and I just got a message from somebody that wanted to articulate again, the small groups that could be coming back into the schools, those are not just for IEPs, they're not just for, they are for labs, they are for small groups that may need help in a certain subject, it is not just for small groups, it is, it will be available across the board as needed, correct?
Yes, we have to figure out the details exactly of that, but yes, it's not intended, I mean, IEPs clearly, their services drive some aspects of that, but we're thinking of this much broader than that in terms of some of the experiences that I laid out, and I'm sure many, many others that Mr. McGowan and his teachers will, will come up with in an attempt to make sure that there are small groups in the school working with, with teachers, and that we look at a plan that as we're able to ease into that, that we can increase those numbers over time, yes.
Great, thanks.
Any other board member, Tony, anything? Okay, I'd like to thank Dr. Lupini over the last couple of days for all his added work to, to articulate a plan that initially was, in my mind, a plan that, oh, we're going back to the same thing, the remote learning. And in this discussion that we've had, this plan is a transitional plan, not here is my plan and live with it. It is ongoing and it is to bring the students back to school. And I want Dr. Lupini for his, his planning on this. And if I may, Rhonda, are we ready for any public comment by our board? It's usually limited to three minutes, our board will not be replying to any of the participants on the, in the comment section, as we have never done on our board. Recently, we had some that was very contentious, but we have stopped it as a board to make comments to participants in the public sector. And I want to thank for everyone that has really stayed with us for an hour or so prior to comment section. And Rhonda, you have an order of?
One, describe it, how we're going to do this.
Yeah, what we'll do is if anybody participating in the meeting is an attendee, if you have any questions or comments, if you could raise your hand, and then what that does, that allows me to see that you're in line for, to make your comment. I will give you permission to speak to the board, address the board, just state your name and your address and your affiliation with the school. And then that way, we'll bring you in, I'll introduce your name, and then your comments can be heard, and then I'll put you back out and we'll move on to the next person. So right now, Henry, I see one person with their hand raised, looks like Charlotte Scott. So Ms. Scott, I'm going to allow you the opportunity to speak.
And I think, I think we're going to ask that you give your address and/or, if you aren't a resident of one of the communities, your affiliation with the, with the school. Thank you.
And I just unmuted her. Maybe. Charlotte Scott, are you there? You may need to unmute yourself, I've tried to do that, but you must have yourself muted. Okay, I'm going to put them back out in the queue and we'll move on to the next person. I'm going to bring in Marcia Roby.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you all very much for all of the information you've shared this morning and in particular Wednesday evening. I've had a chance to look through the deck, I've sent an email to all the board members here. As the parent of an incoming freshman and a rising junior, I'm from the Northampton community. I feel very comfortable with the plan to return with advanced virtual learning. I was really happy to hear about the ability for the kids to go into school in small groups, in particular, my freshman who's never attended Winnicott before. I know this is a really emotional issue, and like Heidi, when you were talking a few minutes ago, I got super emotional because it's hard for our kids, but I really feel comfortable with your focus on safety and enhancing the education experience as we transition back into school, so thank you for your work.
Thank you. And so I am now going to bring in the next person, Andy Wallace. Just try this again, oops.
All right, okay, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
My name is Andrew Wallace, I'm a teacher at Winnicott High School, and I'm also the president of Secult Education Association. Thank you for the chance to address the board today, and thank you for your work on behalf of students and teachers in the SAU 21 in these very difficult times. I'm here today to represent the thoughts and concerns of teachers regarding the upcoming year. The first point I want to address is one that often gets overshadowed in all this, and that is how much we teachers and staff missed in-person teaching and learning and connecting with our students this past spring. As teachers, this profession is our passion, it's fun, it's rewarding, it's difficult, and it's inspiring. For so many reasons, we can't wait to get back to our classes and students. But this brings me to a very different point, and that is the health and safety of our students, their families, this community, and of course, our fellow teachers, our custodial staff, our administrators, our nurses, paraprofessionals, and, and everyone. Simply put, we're concerned about everyone's safety in the midst of an ongoing pandemic, and especially when we're considering putting several hundred to a thousand people together in school buildings. This isn't a theoretical conversation, COVID is already in our schools in New Hampshire. Only a few days ago, Barrington reported a case of COVID-19 in their schools. Recent numbers in Massachusetts reveal upwards of 300 new COVID-19 cases each day on average, and the rate of transmission is now up to 1.06, which indicates the virus is spreading again. New Hampshire's rate of transmission is, is similar and increasing. During these discussions, the pandemic's effect on children are often underreported. However, this virus does not just affect older community members. As of a week ago, Florida had reported more than 31,000 children ages 17 and under have had the coronavirus, and over 300 of them have been hospitalized. In that state, over the past few weeks, pediatric hospitalizations are up 23%, and the percentage of children infected in Florida is still over 10%. Five children have died there. Yesterday, a seven-year-old student in Georgia died, while numbers in schools in the South continue to climb as schools reopen. Even the private school in North Carolina lauded by our Even the private school in North Carolina lauded by our vice president for reopening was forced to close after a student tested positive. In addition to getting the virus, children can spread the virus, as recent studies indicate that children as young as 10 can infect others in the same capacity as adults can. With all this in mind, the recent increase in COVID-19 cases means that Rockingham County needs to think differently about health and safety. And we are. We're meeting safely today on Zoom rather than meeting in person. It's a state of emergency after all. It's our job together to protect the lives and well-being of SAU 21 students, employees, and this community. Our teachers, our nurses, our paraprofessionals, everyone, they need your consideration, and they need your support in a politicized atmosphere where despite the debate, 160,000 Americans in this country have died. Everyone involved in education needs a safe environment in schools, if that's possible, and support for learning outside of schools when it isn't. As you've agreed, the availability and consistent use of masks, PPE, social distancing, and proper ventilation are central in this endeavor. Even with these safeguards, SAU 21 employees' concerns aren't usually matters of choice in returning to school. Many have serious health issues that require changes to their working environment so they can be successful. Or they have children who attend other schools with different schedules. Or they have family members with serious health conditions. There are a variety of reasons why they may not be returning to their classrooms beyond their choice. But they all want to continue their practice and achieve the success that they've accomplished in the past. Remember, SAU 21 schools boast some of the best numbers in the state and are consistently ranked in the top 10 lists in New Hampshire. And Winnicott in particular has been ranked in the top 100 nationally. However, according to our most recent survey, 83% of 268 Secoast Education teachers and staff, the vast majority of whom do not have a medical condition, have stated that they're very concerned about their health and their family's health. But they're all trying to make the adjustments so that they can teach and we can all be successful. These concerns, by the way, about health are the same reasons that up to 33% of SAU 21 parents are keeping their children at home in the fall, too. When you make decisions as a board, let the health and safety of our students and staff continue to be your top priority in both word and deed. We teachers and staff are looking forward to working with the students of SAU 21 again and sharing those great times that we missed so much and in the safest environment possible in the midst of a pandemic. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Andrew.
Very nice to hear from the teachers.
Sorry. The next person I have in line is Keisha Welch. So Keisha, I'm going to let you speak.
Hi, good morning, everybody. How are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Sorry about that. So I've noticed that, obviously Hampton is a different district, but they have adopted the partial in-school and out-of-school. Is there a way to review their hybrid learning, where maybe there's an opportunity for our kids to do hybrid, where maybe one week we have freshmen and sophomore, and then the other week we have juniors and seniors? Like, this is a huge year for freshmen, and even the juniors, because the juniors didn't even get their year last year.
I'm sorry, Keisha. Could you just make sure you give your address and those kinds of things so the board has that for the record?
Sure. I'm at 10 Day Crossing in Seabrook. My daughter will be a freshman, Brianna Welch.
Thank you. So we detailed in the presentation sort of the look at hybrid. By the way, I should say, Mr. Marsh, if you want me to address the question, I can... Dr. Hobbs, would you, I know you did this, you talked about it last night. Would you?
Sure. Yeah. So to the hybrid model, we really, we moved towards the recommended model for a variety of reasons. And I'll just kind of bullet point them out for you. But obviously, we can go back to the larger presentation if we want more information. One is, frankly, just you need a full staff in order to do that. So there are some staffing concerns with that, with that hybrid model. There was a lot of discussion about what it actually does for working parents when you actually, when you have to be home with your kid three days a week. There's some questions about whether it's actually all that beneficial towards working parents. From a safety standpoint, you know, this model allows us to cohort kids into small groups and really keep control over that. In a hybrid model, what you're really doing is exposing teachers to their entire caseload, their entire student population. So you're really just exposing everyone to everyone. So from a, from a health standpoint, that's something that we wanted to stay away from. And then, I mean, I have to say curriculally, with respect to the hybrid model, you are, at least in the SAU 90 model, you're seeing your students face-to-face two days a week, and then the other three, it sounds like there's a supplemental kind of virtual component in this, in this scenario. However, you'd actually be in synchronous learning with your students five days a week. And so from a, from a curriculum standpoint, you're getting through more curriculum, and you're actually getting more face time with your students in this model. And then to, I think it came up earlier, as soon as somebody gets a sniffles or a fever, all of a sudden, this hybrid model has the potential to be a lot less stable. So those are some of the bullet points.
Thank you, David.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Hobbs, which I understand which way you're going, which I guess my, my option would recommend splitting the school for Harvard model would be two grades in at one time, and then two grades in at one time. That way, the whole school wasn't in at one time. And the way you stated was, it's hard for a parent to be home one week. But the way you guys split the SAU, parents with kids, more than one kid, they're screwed either way, because now you've got kids that are home, you've got kids that are in school. Because now they have to bring their kid to Seabrook Elementary, they have kids in Seabrook Middle, they have kids at Winnicott. So they have a kid going to school, two kids not going to school. They're not, they're not being helped either way.
So, so actually, the intent was, I appreciate the comment, but the intent was to, to try to focus those kids who would be in some sort of virtual experience on older, older kids. Even the model that you talked about in terms of grade levels, many people that are doing hybrid aren't adopting it that way, because that actually splits families as well. They are focusing it on going by alphabet. I believe that's how 90 is doing their model. But there were, but you're right, there are very, there are many different ways of, of sort of doing hybrid. And there are many, many, many different hybrid models, which is part of the problem, right? That there are so many different models, so.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you.
So now I have Tyler Hughes. We're going to allow him to speak. And Mr. Hughes, if you could just state your affiliation with the school.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. My name is Tyler Hughes, one down a drive Hampton, New Hampshire, and I'm a rising senior at Winnicott. Multiple of my friends have asked me to say this, because I'm usually the one that kind of comes to these meetings and has done this. But I guess, first of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Lupini and the entire board for hard work on the return to school plan and making sure that keeping the public, the students, the parents informed about all this. We really appreciate everything that you've been doing, and I know it must not be easy to deal with the public during this time. So we thank you for that. My question is, you know, we've talked a lot about the supports that are in place for the freshmen, the orientation, that sort of thing. But many of my peers have asked me about, what is the type of supports that are going to be in place for seniors as they start to explore post-secondary options, talking about college applications, job bears, et cetera? And how are we planning on implementing that, especially in the fall with college applications? So thank you for your time.
Great question, Tyler. Thank you. I don't know, Mr. McGowan, Dr. Hobbs, do you? I know we're in the early stages and really trying to get this work started, but do you want to try to address that? Or I know we have Donna Couture here, who maybe could do that as well?
Well, I mean, yeah, I can, I can, I can jump in. We do, we do have, we do have Donna, who is the chair of an entire fifth of our task force, which was devoted to this very, very question. So I'd feel a little bit remiss if we didn't allow her a chance.
I think we just brought her in.
Donna, sorry.
It's like that millionaire show, Donna. You just got brought into the question.
Own a friend. Own a friend.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I have every faith that you could have handled that question, Dave. But yes, I appreciate the question. This is obviously something from day one that has been a major concern. And we recognize the challenge that our juniors and seniors face in post-secondary planning through the pandemic. So we have put measures in place. Our school counseling department at Winnicott, especially Melinda Schaffner, who's our college counselor, has paid a tremendous amount of attention to what has been happening in our higher ed world, in our career placements, even in, you know, working with military recruiters and whatnot. So all of those choices that students have after high school will need an extensive amount of planning, especially during a pandemic. And if we're not going to be in school in person, we wanted to make sure that we have protocols and plans in place to make sure that our students are able to connect with those representatives virtually. So there'll be more opportunities for you to connect one-on-one. She's been working throughout the summer to make sure that she's scheduling those virtual meetings, just like a Zoom meeting we're in right now. And there'll be also opportunities for you to engage with school counselors in person. We've also are in the process of hiring an alumni relations coordinator to help with our recent graduates. I heard a parent talk about that several times. And Heidi, I'm sure you can appreciate that as well, that we need to make sure that we are connecting with those graduates to make sure that they are achieving their post-secondary plans. So we do have a lot of protocols in place, and we'll continue to develop them as needed.
Thank you, Donna. Mr. Marsh, can I, can I just say before we move on that because of the nature of what happened on Wednesday night in terms of the decision-making and these meetings, I'm just cognizant that we, we have a Seabrook meeting at 10 o'clock. And while I'm happy to, I mean, we, I think we've proven we're happy to sit in Zoom meetings and answer questions, it's going to become difficult if we continue to try to engage in a conversation. And I know I'm the one that's been guilty of it. So we'll try to stop now so that people can get through their...
Well, just real quick, usually we limit the time to 15 minutes. So if we extend this another 15 minutes, that should give you time at quarter to 10.
Thank you very much.
Possible. Thank you.
So the next person I have here is Pamela Chase. So Ms. Chase, if you could just let us know your affiliation with the school and your address?
Good morning. My name's Pam Chase, and I have a 2019 graduate, and I have a rising senior. The question that I have is, I'm a bit confused why five schools in the SAU 21 district have in-person learning, and Winnicott has, they don't have that. I don't know what you guys are referring to it as, calling it... Well, you know what you're calling it. Could you help me understand that? There's been a reference made to staffing, like there's a staffing concern. Could you expand on that and explain?
I could, I could try quickly. So I don't think there are five. The recommendation at Seabrook Elementary is...
That's the only other one besides Winnicott, yes.
Well, let me finish. Is it in-person? And right, and Seabrook Middle is not. So I think that's what you were referring to. So I think what we present, we tried to present the other night is the different element. It has to do with sizes of schools. It has to do with trying to figure out, as we said in the survey, whether the numbers that bonded would allow us to create the kind of cohorts and the kind of class size that would allow us to operate safely. It has to do with the safety protocol laid out in the presentation. It has to do with the number of students who indicated they might be interested in the remote learning academy, and whether that removed enough students for, for us to create those class sizes of 10 or 12, or whatever it may be with social distancing. And by the way, the complications of Winnicott High School with respect to having some number of classrooms that don't have windows and/or in parts of the building that aren't cool when it's warm out and having to implement the heat index. And the other part that I spoke of, I think a few minutes ago, and spoke of in that presentation, I think there's a very good slide in the presentation that alludes to the rights that all employees have in terms of exercising their rights under the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Family Medical Leave Act, the COVID Act that was passed earlier this year with respect to childcare and all of those things. It's really in all of our schools, no one of those, but really the combination of a comprehensive exam of all of them.
So the next person I have with their hand raised is Amy Shoals.
Hi, everyone. I did not call in, so I don't have a question or a comment. And I'm Winnicott, so I'm just an attendee.
Okay. For some reason, it shows your hand is raised. So I'm going to slide you back out there and remove your hand raised.
Thank you.
Looks like we have Lynn Markey.
Hi, everybody. I have an incoming sophomore and an incoming senior. So I'm not sure if this has been addressed. I have questions about the plan, if there's a plan in place to start rephasing Winnicott, like, is there a plan, is there a plan to start rephasing kids back into school at some point? If so, do we have a timeline for that? I worry about the seniors, you know, missing out on the whole end-of-year thing, the way that last year's seniors, 2019 seniors, or 2020 seniors, I guess, had to deal with. Also, I'm wondering about the grading system. I know that with the remote learning in the spring, the grading was a little bit different. I'm wondering if we're going back to the kind of business as usual as far as grading with the remote learning. And I guess, oh, yeah.
I can try part of that, and I know Dr. Hobbs will try the other part. And if I just say to people who are here, I really think it's worth, I'm not saying this because we did it. I really think it's worth your time to watch the presentation from, from Wednesday, because many of these questions are really detailed. It's a lengthy presentation, but I think it hits on many, many, many of these issues and really provides a great deal of detail about these questions. On the first issue, what we've said is, we're going to look at this every two weeks. I mean, we're going to look at this every two weeks, right? We're going to try to bring more smaller groups in. We're going to try to expand upon that over time. And we're going to continue to look at, particularly with our medical advisors, what we can do and when we can do it. I can't make promises about the entirety of a school year, as I sit here in August. Our goal, bring kids back five days a week for a full school day safely. And when we, when we believe in consultation with the data that we're looking at statewide and in our county, and when our medical advisors tell us that we can do that safely with those appropriate protocol in place, then, then we will move to those phases. But we intend to be really upfront about, about how those decisions or what we'll be looking at. We'll publish that. We haven't done that. We will. And we intend to make, make that evaluation every two weeks.
Okay.
Dr. Hobbs, the grading?
Right. So you're, that, thank you for the question on grading and assessment. Again, that was, it was covered in the presentation. But to, to just answer it very quickly, we have every intention of coming back to the enhanced virtual with traditional, the traditional mindset with grading. Just two pieces on that that I just want to cover. One is with respect to the competencies and standards in the class. For the first time ever, the SAU K through 12 does have a published list of competencies and standards. So we are able to assess where students are in each one of those for all of our classes, which is a huge deal for diagnostics. But two, in terms... But two, in terms of what you can expect for a traditional report card, it's going to be much like the 2019, 20, as opposed, or 2018, 19, as opposed to the 2019, 20 reporting system.
Okay. I guess that's my only question, I mean, I just worry, because my kids, to be totally honest, did not do well with remote learning, and I think that, that grading system that you had in place at the end of the year probably saved one of them and allowed them to pass, so, you know, I, I'm lucky that my kids are a little bit older, and I, you know, as far as like supervision, like for their safety, I don't need to be there, but I feel like also to ensure that they're getting done what needs to be done, you know, I just worry, I worry that, that it's not going to work for us, to be totally honest, and, you know, I worry that my kids aren't, well, one of them anyway, will struggle with, you know, passing and keeping up, so.
The, the things that we put in place are really designed to have more engagement, right? Having a schedule, having kids see teachers live five days a week, having kids come in in small groups, are all meant to engage, and, and yet, we also know that there will be, there will be kids who will, that, that, that won't make a huge difference for them, and that's where our support, our guidance councils all come in, in terms of those, that reaching out to families. So I, I'm hopeful, I think we've built a plan off of, off of feedback, we got some from staff, feedback we got from parents, that will be drastically improved from what you saw in that crisis mode that we were in, and if not, there needs to be a conversation between you and those people who can help.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I also hope that the, the schedule and the structure's a little bit better.
Yeah.
Because I feel like that's, you know, I mean, when you have a 15-year-old and a 17-year-old who are upset because they can't go to school, you know, that things are, things are tough, so I do appreciate, I appreciate your answers, thank you.
Thank you.
The next person I'm going to bring in is, we're going to try Charlotte Scott again. Ms. Scott, are you there?
Yeah, I'm not, I didn't have a question.
Oh, okay, your hand was raised.
Oh, that was my bad.
Okay. And I, looks, looks like we have, and Alex Andropoulos is the last name, if you could just introduce yourself.
Hi, this is Kiska Alex Andropoulos, and I have two candidates, one's going to be a junior and one's going to be a senior at Winnicott, and we are from Northampton, and I am concerned, just like the previous mom, about being engaged with teachers, making sure that there's follow-up when kids aren't doing what they are supposed to be doing. It puts a lot of pressure on parents, you know, my kids often say yes, that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and then I find out that they didn't, and, you know, that's as much on me as it is on them, but it's an awfully difficult position to put parents in for follow-up, especially if you don't know exactly what they're doing. So I guess just better communication with parents would be something I would definitely advise you to keep on track with that, because, again, like the previous mom and boys slid through, and it was no service to them. I mean, I don't think that the grading scale was a service to them, because they felt like the, you know, as long as they did enough to get by, and what they did was just enough to get by. And frankly, you know, I think that, that we lowered the bar so much that they didn't really put a lot of effort in, and that concerns me that that's how they, you know, they need some sort of motivation, and unfortunately, that right now needs to be external motivation from either the school, parents, and peers, you know, for everyone to continue to do well, to, you know, be productive and, you know, strive for excellence. So that's the messaging I would like to see, is that kids, we know this is hard on them, and of course, we're looking at the mental health effects, and it's, it's tough, it's tough for everyone, but I think that we don't want to lose that message, that we want our kids to continue to strive for excellence, and that they can attain these goals by reaching out for help, and I, I look for assistance from staff in that arena, because parents need help too, to know how to have these conversations with their kids and not alienate themselves. Thank you for your time, you're doing a great job.
Couldn't agree more, thank you so much for those comments.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Certainly, certainly.
Again, I know there may be other questions, but I just wanted to let, you know, the community know that we'll be sending updates probably shortly, beginning next week, and again, if you have any questions or concerns, please feel, feel free to email, email me or call me, and we'll respond to those questions. So our goal is to make this transition as successful as possible, as positive an experience as we can.
Yeah, thank you, Bill, I was asked to make one other comment, and, and, you know, I know that made the comment about time, but I'll make one more comment, and that's about SST, so I know a lot of people are, are very interested. Many of you know that Mr. McGowan sits as a member of the principals group at SST, I sit as a member, Mr. Rabado sits as a member of the governing board of SST, we've been meeting regularly, talking about the schedule at SST. Couple things I want to say, our students, if SST does operate in person, and I think that's still up in the air, they will be permitted, and we will make sure that they can get there. We're, we're going to make sure that happens. Second of all, if, if parents don't feel comfortable, or if students don't feel comfortable going there, we've been working with SST to make sure that there is a virtual option for them with, with each of their program areas. So you will be able to participate in SST, if the SST program is part of your schedule, and we're working hard with them to make sure that you can access that virtually or in-person through, throughout your program area, throughout your program, starting at the beginning of the year, and we'll have much more to say about that in the coming weeks.
Excuse me, Dr. Lupini, could you explain what SST is?
We do that more than once in a while, Seacoast School of Technology, it is our, it is where our students are able to access career and technical education, it's actually considered part of the Exeter School System of, of, of SAU 16, but students from our district, and Epping, and Sanborn, and Newmarket are able to attend there as well, and we have, we have a robust number of students there, they run great programs, and we want to make sure our students still have access. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda, are there any other participants that would like to speak? If not, we're going to return to the next point on the agenda.
I have, I did get one hand that just raised of somebody that spoke earlier, I can give them another moment real quickly. Keisha Welch.
Hi, good morning, I just have one additional question, last year, we had some, I guess, some problems with one of the teachers who refused to use the parent porthole, are we going to require teachers to use that?
So there's a, there's a very good slide in that presentation, Keisha, that talks about parent, sort of parent responsibilities, student responsibilities, and staff responsibilities, and, and, and yes, use of the portal, use of PowerSchool, those ways of communicating with people are, are in that list of expectation, so the simple answer to your question is yes.
I believe that's it.
Thank you. Will we be moving on to making a vote? Understand that we do have a meeting on August 18th as a, as a board, this is an emergency meeting to consider the educational report on, on Winnicott, and also to accept or reject the recommendations that the transition group, is there anyone else that would like to speak prior to a motion to accept or reject as a board? Any participants? I can't believe, Dr. Lupini, you don't have something to say.
I beg your pardon.
Continuing on.
Can I make a motion?
You certainly may.
I make a motion that we approve the reopening as presented.
I'd like to second that.
Thank you, and that's Mike Rabado.
Yes.
Just a moment of clarification, Mike Rabado is also the chair of the Seabrook School Board that has a meeting in about 15 minutes. Thank you. Is there any other discussion from our board?
I just want to say one thing, that this plan by no means makes everybody happy, and we get that, but I honestly, truly believe that the work that was put into this plan, it is the best plan that we can do right this, right now, and I wholeheartedly agree with it.
Thank you, lastly, and also, this plan is a transitional plan, it is not absolute, and the SAU Winnicott High School is working to get all those students back to school, and that's our goal, our goal is to get kids back to school and to, you know, part of the social, emotional, kids want to be back there, parents want the kids to be back to school, and we're trying to facilitate that, and again, Rhonda will be calling the roll for the vote, and I guess at this time.
Is there a second? I'm sorry.
Yes, Mike, Mike was the second.
Heidi Tarasina.
Yes.
Henry Marsh.
Yes.
Leslie LaFond. Leslie, you're muted. Mike Rabado. Mike, you were muted, yes. Tony Delano. Tony, we can't hear you. Tony Delano.
Can you send a chat comment?
He just did, he says yes, okay. All right, I have the vote recorded.
Thank you, that was a five, five zero, and again, to board members, we do have a meeting on the 18th, and at this point, it is going to be a Zoom meeting, if I'm correct, Rhonda.
I believe so, the, the issue is, is audience size and, and the ability to handle a group of attendees if they come, that, that's, that's the issue right now.
We've had over 180 people here on this meeting today, so that would have been difficult in person.
Okay, thank you. With that vote, is there a vote to adjourn the meeting, or is there anything else, excuse me?
There's nothing else today, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Leslie, you had a vote to adjourn?
I see Heidi waving her hand as a second.
Oh.
Moving forward, everyone.
Thank you.
Is everybody in favor?
Yes.
All right, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you?